First Commission Meeting of 2021. This is a little different as I'll be opening today's meeting and calling it to order until we can conduct our election of Chair, and then upon election of the Chair, we'll appropriately pass the gavel. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order if we could all stand. Commissioner Totacini has agreed to lead us in the invocation, followed by Commissioner Fortner with the Pledge of Allegiance.
We all have our different belief system, but I'm going to start in Navajo, which is Kodo Jondoleh, for the Inta Tatanlini, Ni Ka Tahu Jondo, Vani Hingyata Jondo. We pray for the family of Everett Howe. He was one of our retired county workers, and he passed away from COVID. Keep us, dear Lord, under your protection, and help us follow the safety precautions as we go out in the community, as we're with family. May this new year bring relief so that we can get vaccinations for people and things can return to some sort of semblance of normal. But we pray for our health, we pray for leadership, and we pray for Commissioner Sullivan, Commissioner Beckstead, Commissioner Lanier, Commissioner Fortner, and keep us wise and full of compassion for our citizens. For these, we thank you, dear God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic of America.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, well, I didn't mention this earlier, but I'd like to extend a warm welcome to Commissioner Fortner and Commissioner Lanier. Welcome to the County Commission.
Thank you.
So good to have you both here tonight. So first order of business is election of a Chair for 2021. So I'll go ahead and open up the process for any nominations.
I will move to nominate John Beckstead as Chair.
Okay. Mr. Beckstead, would you incur when you accept the nomination? I would. Okay. All right. Commissioner Sullivan, did you have a comment?
She nominated?
Yes. Commissioner Fortner nominated Commissioner Beckstead.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. I'll go ahead and close nominations and move forward to a vote. If you could all signify, and we're going to do this via roll call to make certain that we've captured that appropriately for the Attorney General. So I guess we'll start with Commissioner Totacini and work down the line. If you could let us know your...
Commissioner Totacini, I vote yes.
Commissioner Fortner, I vote yes.
Commissioner Beckstead, I vote yes.
Commissioner Lanier, I vote yes.
And Commissioner Sullivan, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Okay. Well, it's a unanimous vote. Congratulations, Commissioner Beckstead. I will pass the gavel to you to continue the meeting.
I won't throw it out like a boomerang.
Just pass it to you.
All right. So we're still in election of Chairman Pro Tem. I'd open the floor for nominations for Chairman Pro Tem.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I'm on Terry Fortner.
Terry? It doesn't require a second nomination, is it?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate myself.
Okay, so we have Terry and Lo Jean. Are there any other nominations?
I move that nomination cease.
There a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll, I guess I need to do the same as if, I'll assume that it wasn't unanimous unless somebody speaks up after the vote that says, no, it wasn't unanimous. Is that, is that fair?
No.
So go ahead, Mr. Sullivan.
I would nominate Terry Fortner.
Okay, she's already been nominated. Nominations have been closed. We're going to move on to vote, and I'm going to do it in the order in which the nominations were made. I think that's probably the appropriate way to do that. So those in favor, and we'll do it as a roll call so that it's on the, on the record, those in favor of Terry Fortner, I'll start with Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
Commissioner Totacini?
No.
Commissioner Fortner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. I don't know as though that means that we should move on, or should I?
Yeah.
Need to test the other vote. So moving on, so that was four, four, one against for Commissioner Fortner. For Commissioner Totacini, start with you. Commissioner Sullivan, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Totacini?
Yes.
Commissioner Fortner?
No.
Commissioner Lanier?
No.
And I'm a no as well. So Terry Fortner will be our Chairman Pro Tem, and then we move on to the next item. So...
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment? You know, in all the years I've been Commissioner, I've never been Chair. I was Pro Tem with Doc Henderson way back, and we used to take turns to be Chair. But I don't know if in the next couple of years we might consider that. I know that party-wise, I'm the odd one. I'm the minority here. But I just want to say, maybe before I end my term, I would like to be Chair one day. If it never happens, so be it. But thank you, though. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I want to say that with, with this being partisan, it doesn't have any effect on my appreciation for you and all that you do for, for the Commission.
Yeah.
I think that this is more of a function of political party than it is, than it is how I see you as a person, most definitely, because I've seen you do great things on the Commission and appreciate all your efforts.
Okay. Yeah, we'll work as a team.
Absolutely. All right. So I'll stand for a motion to enter into the Board of Finance.
I'll make that motion.
A motion and a second by Commissioner Sullivan. I don't think that needs discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I'll assume that that was unanimous. So we'll enter into the Board of Finance.
Who do we have? Carol Tulby.
Carol Tulby. Oh, is that on the phone?
Okay, yeah. Hi, Commissioner Chairman and Commission. Welcome. Congratulations, Commissioner Chairman, and welcome to the new members. Everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Every year, at the beginning of the year, in order for us to participate in the local government investment pool, the Commission has to approve a resolution allowing us to do so. So I am requesting that you approve San Juan County Resolution Number 202134, giving myself and Brian Myers authority to be able to invest in the local government investment pool. We have a little over 2.1 million in that fund, and when the rates are good, it performs well. There's not anything performing well right now, but it has been an asset in the past.
Hey, Carol, does this automatically go to a certain bank then?
Yeah, it's a, it's a pool within the State Treasurer's office, and they manage it. So it's a pool of funds.
Thank you. That's all I have.
You're welcome.
I'd stand for a motion.
So moved.
Then moved and seconded, we consider the Resolution 20-21-34. Is there any, any further discussion? Not hearing any from the discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And it sounds as though it was unanimous, unless I hear otherwise. I'll stand for a motion to enter, or to leave the Board of Finance and enter back into our regular meeting.
Motion to you.
Moved and seconded.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Carol. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? We're back into our regular meeting. Gives us to approval of agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, no changes tonight. Agenda's presented as is.
Okay. And so I'll stand for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the agenda for today.
Any second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded, approve the agenda. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is approved. It brings us to the consent agenda. Has one item, which is the consideration of approval for regular meeting minutes from December 15, 2020.
Mr. Chair, since I was at that meeting, I moved to approve.
Very well. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Having been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Sounds as though it passed unanimously unless I hear otherwise. Brings us to new business. Number one is consideration of mission approval for the fiscal year 20 comprehensive annual financial report audit completed by Patio Hill, or Brown and Hill LLP. Kim Martin is here. Whoa.
Yeah, I'm here.
Is here to, to present this, this item.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Congratulations on all your new positions and new roles. Certainly welcome. I'm here to perform today to introduce Chris Skarmar, partner with Patio Brown and Hill, and he will be giving you a presentation regarding the results of our 2020 audit in accordance with the State Audit Call. Yes?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Someone's going to give me the ability to share my PowerPoint. There it is.
Can you see it?
Yes, sir.
Perfect.
I can't, but go ahead.
Okay. Commissioner, the one that cannot see it, I have given a copy to the Finance Department, and they can send that along to you so that you can see it at some point later on. So they, they have the, this PowerPoint presentation so that we can send that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So first of all, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to work with the county. As you can see, as we go through this presentation, you know, the audit went extremely smooth. Everything went well. And what I have here is kind of some of the highlights from the exit conference that we had back in, I think, November at some point. And so we'll just go through, this is required communication, some of the required communication that we as auditors are required to make the, to those that are charged with governance. So the first thing we'll get started off with is what is the result of the audit? What is our report going to state? And we issued what we call an unmodified opinion. I like to say it's a clean opinion because that is, in essence, the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can give. And in that report, we say that your financial statements are fully presented in accordance with the standards that we have to follow. And so again, this is the type of report that the county wants to get, and this is a good thing. This is the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can give. So unmodified opinion was the opinion that was issued. There are two other reports from us in the, in the financial statements. The one on the left is what is more commonly referred to as a Yellow Book Report. And in that Yellow Book Report, we are required to test items differently than we do in a regular audit. We have to look at internal controls differently. We have to actually expand our sampling. And in New Mexico, the State Auditor requires us to even look at more populations. So in New Mexico, we have to look at procurement. We have to look at travel. We have to look at P-card transactions. So there's a lot more samples that we actually have to pull, and so there are a lot more transactions that have to be tested in our state. Based upon that testing, we don't give an opinion on internal controls. What we do in that report is just spell out how we look at internal controls differently than what is required in a regular audit. And then we report our findings. And as you can see in the yellow, we had no exceptions, even with all the expanded testing that we had to do. And so that's, all the transactions were following county policies. The internal controls were being properly applied. And so again, we did not have any findings that related to those additional testing and the Yellow Book testing that we had to do. The report on the right, because the county receives more than 750,000 of federal funds and spends it, we have to do a compliance audit, or it's more commonly referred to as a single audit. So what we do is we look at various grants, and we come through, we do a risk assessment, and we have to test certain grants to make sure that the county is following the guidelines spelled out by the federal government. And this year, we looked at the HUD program, the HUD grants, so the housing program. And we've looked at that one actually the last couple of years. And so based upon our testing, we are issuing an opinion, and we're giving that same opinion, an unmodified or a clean opinion, again, the highest level of assurance that we can give as auditors. So both reports, or both opinions that we give in your report are the type of opinions that the county wants to receive. With that compliance audit and that single audit, we, we could have findings based upon our testing, but again, there are no findings that were related to that testing. And so we are issuing our financial, the financial statements were issued with no findings at all. So the county did not have any exceptions, did not have any control weaknesses that we had to report. And in New Mexico, that threshold for reporting findings is really at the ground level. The New Mexico State Auditor has made a rule that if we come across anything, whether it's an insignificant amount or an insignificant issue, we are required, according to the State Audit Rule, to report all findings. And so again, we have kind of a higher threshold in New Mexico, or a lower threshold, I guess I should say. We have higher standards that we have to follow when we are issuing both these reports. And again, we did not have any exceptions. So with that, we'll move on to the next slide. We, I, I think this is a really important one, especially with COVID this year. We are supposed to communicate if we have difficulties encountered in performing the audit, and we didn't have any. The audit went extremely smooth. We did the majority of it remotely. And what I think that tells the Commission, you know, especially in a COVID year, having to really adjust, it tells you that your finance department has done a good job with maintaining their records and keeping good accurate documentation to support the transactions and the questions that we come up with. You know, you have adopted a new accounting software, I think it was last year, was the first year we had to audit it, and the implementation of that has gone extremely well. The documentation is maintained in the system, and everything was given to us, like I said, without any hesitation. So even though we had to adjust and it was a little bit of a different audit, the audit went extremely smooth, and your records are being maintained in a good order. To me, this is one of the more important communications, because as a Commission, you're having to make financial decisions throughout the year. And if we as auditors are having to come in and make lots of changes, that could cause you some concerns. But as you can see, we did not have a single adjustment. All the numbers recorded by your accounting department were accurate. And so what that tells the Commission is that when you're given numbers throughout the year, you can feel good that those are good numbers, that you're making those financial decisions on. And so again, I really feel that this is a very important communication. I do approximately 40, about 40 audits that get submitted to the State Auditor. And with findings, we probably have about 15, I actually went through and calculated, about 15% of our clients do not have findings, and approximately 15% don't have adjustments. But for a client not to have an adjustment and not to have a finding, it was less than 5% that that happens with. And so again, I think that demonstrates to you that the financial reports that you are getting are accurate, and it's good information so that you can feel comfortable as you're making your financial decisions on, you know, throughout the year, that you can rely on those numbers. And again, it's not very often that we have clients in the state of New Mexico that don't have either adjustments or findings. So again, that's a really good reflection on the county and your finance department in handling your transactions and establishing internal controls and following, following those internal controls. The county goes above and beyond with issuing what's called a comprehensive annual financial report, or it's called a CAFR. And so what happens is, is the standards that we have to follow, GAAP, don't require you to have all the information that's included in your financial statements. The county quite a few years ago decided to step up and issue a CAFR, which has a lot of additional information that's very useful to citizens, to bond rating agencies, to a lot of individuals. And so there's a lot more information that you include in your financial statements that you don't have to. And what happens is, is that CAFR gets submitted to the general, to the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. It's a national organization that's actually very well-respected throughout the United States that oversees that program. And the CAFR gets submitted to them for a certificate for achievement or excellence in financial reporting. The county has received that award for 13 consecutive years. The county is only one of 18 New Mexico governments. So we have over 700 governments in the entire state, and only 18 go above and beyond and go after this award as of 2018, which is the most recent information that is available. And so our state has always not been very active in this program and going above and beyond. And so the county, again, has done it for 13 consecutive years. There are five counties in New Mexico that received the award in 18, and so we're one of the, the five counties out of 33 that's received the award. So it does put additional pressure on your accounting staff to ensure that you're complying with the requirements set by GFOA. This does have some benefits to the county. When bond ratings are looking at your financial statements and they're getting that additional information, you do get credit for that. And it does help with bond ratings. And so it, it's worth the effort that goes into it. And again, you know, I think it's something that the county should be very proud of because there's not very many entities in our state that go after this award. With that, I've got a few slides with just some financial highlights. This very first slide takes all of your funds, in essence, pushes them together and puts them on a different basis of accounting that you don't really follow throughout the year. And so when you're setting your budgets and you're monitoring your financial statements throughout the year, you're doing on a different basis than what this report is. This report actually shows long-term assets and long-term liabilities. And at the end of the year, the county ended up with $282 million of assets, 164 million of liabilities, and leaving, in essence, net position or equity of 118 million. And again, this isn't really how you operate. The only time you see these numbers are during the audit and when the audit is presented. But again, it's just kind of a high level, what the total assets and all the liabilities of the county are. Really, the most important fund of the county is the general fund. That's the, the fund that is, in essence, the operating fund of the county. And so at the end of the year, you ended up with $34 million in assets and about 4.4 million of liabilities, coming up with a fund balance, or again, equity of 218 million. million of liabilities, coming up with a fund balance, or again, equity of $29.6 million. The next slide kind of goes into what is, what does that consist of? And so with the general fund at the end of the year, you ended up with about 24, a little over 24 million of cash and investments, $7 million of accounts receivable, 1.2 million dollars of prepaid assets, and then 1.4 million dollars of inventory. And the amounts were fairly consistent between the two years. Really, the only change that happened was your accounts receivable in the prior year were about 1.8, 1.8 million dollars lower. So that did increase during the current year. But other than that, really, your balance sheet in the general fund has stayed very consistent between, um, 2020 and 2019. Liabilities in that fund, um, are very minimal. Again, they were very, very consistent between the two years. You ended up with about 4.4 million of liabilities in the general fund. And again, there was really nothing that was very significant with changes. The general fund revenues are kind of a little bit misleading. Um, as you can see, in 2020, there's kind of a big jump with taxes, but actually the taxes didn't increase in total. Um, what happened is, is because of, um, generally accepted accounting principle change, some of the funds that had been reported in another fund are now being reported in the general fund, and then they're getting transferred out through a transfer, but it still is revenue in the general fund. But overall, the real increase that you're seeing here is just because it was, it was in another, it was in actually the debt service fund, you had some revenues that are now being accounted for in the general fund. Really, gen, uh, and it relates to grocery receipts taxes. The grocery seats taxes between years remained almost exactly the same, so there was not really an increase there. It's just an accounting, um, change that had to happen this year. Your expenses have remained fairly consistent in total. Um, you can see that they're 51 point million in 2020 compared to 52.8 million in the prior year. Um, you will see some differences with public safety and also with, um, health and welfare. The public safety mostly relates to the fact that there are some funds, salaries now that can be charged to the FIRE excise tax fund. So again, it's not like the, those expenses really decreased. It's just those salaries are now being allocated to a different fund. And then we did have an increase in the health and welfare because of, um, medical expenditures for self-insurance. Um, you know, this year they increased about $600,000 just due to the activity and your, um, medical expenses at the county. With that, I'll open up to any questions.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, would this, would, could, would this be a reflection on, uh, on our staff managers too?
Say that once more.
Could this be a reflection upon the staff manager like, like Mike?
Uh, well, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure he'll take as much credit as he can get.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sullivan, I'll actually defer credit. Uh, it's really a group effort. And, uh, and I actually mentioned this, this morning on our department head staff, meaning, you know, it's, it's a combination of our finance department, no doubt, the tremendous amount of work, on the tradition of excellence that they've carried through the years. Um, but it's also our, our elected officials and department heads who are 100% willing to, to achieve full compliance and to meet all the required internal controls that we have in place. Sometimes it can be a little difficult and, you know, they're not always the easiest standards to meet, but they, they do. And look at their, look at the results and the success that we've had with the number of years that we've received the, the CAFR award and the, the budget award from GFOA. So it, it truly is a, a team effort. And I just want to say thank you on behalf, as county manager, on behalf to all those who were involved, uh, to make this happen. And I think, uh, for the, for the benefit of our citizens, um, you know, this, this goes to show that we've got a fiscally sound, transparent and accountable, um, management of government funds here. And so that's, that's really, the real winner here are the citizens of San Juan County. So I do appreciate you pointing that out and allowing me to, to comment. Thank you.
You know, one of the, one of the disadvantages of, of doing this so many years in a row is that it becomes expected. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure internally, you know, it's, it's something that you expect of your, of yourself and, and all of the staff. So there's a lot of effort that's put into that, so.
Every, every year I, I tell my staff, I was like, you know, we, especially this year going forward, um, just saying, you know, we, we've set the bar and all we can do is just continue to try and move it higher. So, and all of my staff has just done a tremendous job in, in, and helping us get this done and being able to meet the standards that we need to, so.
As part of the commission, I'd like to extend our appreciation for everything that you and, and your staff has done.
Thank you. And I, and I can't go without saying thanks to Jim Cox as well. He was the prior, uh, CFSO and he was the one.
He may have helped a little.
Yeah. Just a little. And without this guidance, um, you know, I don't think I would be able to be in the position that I am today, so.
All right. Well, it's an action item to approve, uh, the, the comprehensive annual financial report. So I'll stand for a motion.
I move that we, uh, adopt the comprehensive annual financial report.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion, comments, questions? Not hearing any. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Sullivan, I think I might have heard you. What, what was your vote?
Aye.
I believe that was unanimous.
Yes, and then the, the resolution, um, when, once you sign that, that'll be official. We can send that on to the, to the state.
Right.
Thank you.
Imagine that'll be somewhere.
It's in there.
Okay. All right. Gets us to number two, which is an update on, uh, the enchantment, the enchant energy project, Cindy Crane and I believe Hank Adair. Is that going to be online? All right. Devin's going to get us lined up and then I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you all for the opportunity for Hank and I. And we have Peter Mandelstam, uh, with us also today to be able to come and give you an update on the San Juan Generating Station, um, carbon capture project. And so with that, I will turn it over to Hank and him and I are going to tag team a little bit here on our presentation.
Thank you, Cindy. And, uh, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, County Manager Stark, thank you for allowing us this opportunity. Um, as City of Farmington FEUS representative, I'll kind of give you a quick background of how we got here with our partnership with Enchant related to San Juan Generating Station. Uh, City of Farmington, Farmington Electric has partnered with Enchant Energy on a project to continue operation of San Juan past the summer of 2022. The current, uh, five owners that are operating San Juan Unit 4, 1 and 4 had to make a decision in 2018 on whether to continue the project or not. Of those, only one, uh, ownership, the City of Farmington, wanted to continue the project. And so that allowed us the opportunity to market the project. Obviously, it's a no-brainer for the City of Farmington with, uh, the jobs and, uh, the economy base that is for San Juan County why our decision was made, but there are multiple aspects and we'll discuss those wins here shortly. And so basically, the agreement between Enchant and Farmington, we're looking to run the, the coal plant from, from its operation in 2022, the summer of 2022 to 2035, at least, and depending on where 45Q tax credits go, which Cindy will talk about shortly. Um, that is where we want to comply with the plant, the project, make it viable. By installing carbon capture, we'll meet what's, uh, the requirements of the Energy Transition Act, actually greatly exceed them. And also it meets the compliance standards for what is required to market, um, electricity across the West with its carbon capture installation. That includes California's regulations, for example. Under the agreement, as I mentioned, the owners decided to leave in 2018 and they had a chance to market the plan until November of 2018. At that point, uh, none of the other owners had marketed their opportunities. And so as such, in the agreement, that transfers the rights to the City of Farmington, the lone extender. To give you an order of magnitude, the plant is an 847 net megawatt plant of generation between those two units. And the City of Farmington and Farmington's Electric's peak load ever is 200 megawatts, so four times the highest peak for the utility. So obviously, an opportunity to market it was what we were looking for, and that's where we had the luck and the tendency to find Enchant to partner with us. And greatly pleased with that formation and their vision to look at carbon capture. So with that, uh, City of Farmington, Farmington Electric is planning to, or will retain 5% of the total ownership in the plant and try it for 5% of the, or 95% of those rights to Enchant Energy. And currently, Farmington and Enchant are working on the negotiations to complete the agreements with the owners. You can imagine how complex those could be with liabilities and decommissionings and things like that. Next slide. So when I talk City of Farmington, uh, I'm representing the city here, but it, nothing would have come to play without the vision and the leadership of our Mayor Nate Duckett and our city councilors. Along with them and our executive leadership, Rob Main, the city manager, um, set the vision to, to task us to, to go out there and find Enchant and, and work to bring this project to a success. Another key player within Farmington's officials is Jennifer Brakel, our city attorney. She's worked through many of the negotiations on the San Juan project, so she's a key asset as, as we work to complete all the negotiations that are going on. With that, I'll hand it over to Cindy.
Thanks, Hank. Um, you know, I, I just want to say hi to everyone. You know, I think I've met most of you, but not all of you. So, um, very pleased to meet, meet the rest of you in the commission today. And, um, I came to Enchant Energy in July of last year. And together, Peter Mandelstam, who has been before you on more than one occasion presenting on the project, uh, we make up the executive management team for Enchant. Um, together, we bring a pretty extensive, but also very complementary skill set, um, with our experience, whether that be in energy investing, whether that's associated with, um, new company startups or energy development or electric utility operations. And so we do have the bandwidth of experience that really help us be able to bring together a team. Um, this, you know, the slide says team, but you only see two names on here. And, um, you know, the team is really comprised of a significant list of partners, um, and service providers, which we'll go over, um, as we go through the presentation. But without those partners, and of course, with the City of Farmington being the, the most important partner with us, uh, we couldn't be where we are today and have this opportunity. So we appreciate, um, the opportunity to, to be able to be part of the, the San Juan County and the community there. The San Juan Generating Station as a carbon capture project will be the largest carbon capture project in the world. Um, with its 90% plus carbon remove, removal, which I'll talk a little bit more about that plus side, um, the, the plant will also be the lowest emitting CO2 per megawatt hour large-scale fossil fuel power plant in the world. The CO2 intensity is significantly reduced when we add the carbon capture and remove that carbon. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, especially in the context of the, uh, compliance with the Energy Transition Act. We have secured two sizable Department of Energy Cooperative Funding Agreements, um, of which I know you have been very supportive in helping us achieve, uh, the $19 million DOE grant, um, in partnership with New Mexico Tech for the drilling of the sequestration well and the characterization of the geologic formation there. Um, that project will position New Mexico to be able to, um, utilize, uh, sequestration wells for 100% permanent sequestration of the San Juan Generating Station produced carbon. And the other, um, grant that we have, uh, sizable is a $9.4 million grant, and that is for the front-end engineering and design study. Um, and that study is underway and being led by our partners in conjunction with working with both Peter and Hank, um, uh, as we advance that, that project. And that really is the front end, as it's called, um, detailed work that is going to allow us to then actually put a full engineering procurement and construction contract in place that will be a firm, fixed-priced construction contract. So that's the level of detail and the next step where that takes us. We have also partnered and retained Bank of America, um, for the down-the-road component, which is scheduled for the end of this year, which is the, the raising of the $1.4 billion that is necessary for the construction of the Carbon Capture Island. Bank of America will also serve as our tax equity investor, um, leading that effort to attract a, the tax equity investment. Um, they are the leading tax equity institution in the United States. So we're very excited to have them as a partner as well. Although we are moving forward with New Mexico Tech on the, um, sequestration test well and the ability to sequester 100% of the CO2 permanently in a geologic formation in New Mexico, um, you know, when, when I look at projects and running a business, I always look for risk diversification. And in the spirit of risk diversification, we are continuing to also, um, look and speak with, uh, parties on CO2 offtake for enhanced oil recovery opportunities as well. That will give us the, the parallel and flexible opportunity to either permanently sequester or, um, divert to, um, the Permian Basin for enhanced oil recovery, depending upon what oil prices in the market is for that. And that really is, um, helping with risk diversification. The, the 90% carbon removal will produce approximately 5.8 million metric tons of CO2 per year. So if we're selling some of that CO2 for enhanced oil recovery, um, uh, we will have some sales revenue there. Uh, but the 45Q tax credit is what makes these projects feasible today. And the, the combination of that, uh, is really what is going to pay for the carbon capture construction as well as the operation of the carbon capture facilities. So we're, we're running a parallel path as it pertains to carbon. And the percentages that are stored in New Mexico versus go to enhanced oil recovery really will be determined based on both technical and financial viability. Uh, but we want those options, um, to have both options going forward. The other great thing about, um, the project is that we start in a very good position with the electricity offtake from the 847 net megawatts that Hank referenced. And the reason we start in a good position is because 34% of that 847 net megawatts is already committed. The 5% that Hank referenced, which is the City of Farmington's, and the Carbon Capture Island actually takes electricity and steam from the power plant as a paying customer, and they take, they will take 29% of, um, the output, both electricity and steam. Uh, we are currently, um, in negotiations as well as marketing the remainder of the output from the power plant as it pertains to electricity sales and making good progress. And I would say very positive reaction in the marketplace, um, due to the, the low emission, low carbon nature of the electricity, um, but ha, still having that base load secure reliability aspect that the coal plants in our fleets have provided us for a good 50 that the coal plants in our fleets have provided us for a good 50 years. So why San Juan? A lot of people ask why San Juan is a good fit for this versus maybe some other power plants in the West. And, you know, when I came into the picture, I really looked at what positions San Juan and this carbon capture project to be economically feasible and provide long-term stability. One, as Hank mentioned, is scale. You guys all know that scale matters in economics, and having 847 megawatts net tremendously helps the economic viability of the carbon capture project. But also, its location to a very secure coal supply. The high BTU coal that's supplied by the San Juan mine is very critical to supporting the economics and the sustainability of the plant's operations. The environmental footprint is extremely critical as to why San Juan Generating Station is a good fit for carbon capture. The plant already has very low NOx, SOx, mercury, and particulate emissions, and the carbon capture is going to be the technology that now comes in and significantly reduces the CO2 emissions. It's also located very close to the Cortez Pipeline, which provides the access to the Permian Basin for enhanced oil recovery and gives us that parallel path opportunity. But I love the picture that's on this slide, and the reason I do is because that is the transmission grid that you see in red. And coming from where I came from in my utility background, transmission is a critical aspect of projects of this nature. And you can see that the San Juan Generating Station is located in the heart of the southwestern transmission grid. That allows having transmission access to move the power out, whether it's throughout New Mexico, whether it's over to Arizona, whether it's all the way over to California, whether it's up to Colorado, Nevada, or Utah. And that means diversification and flexibility as well. The ability for Enchant to step in to acquire 95% of the San Juan Generating Station for only $1 cannot be overstated on how critical that is to supporting the economic viability of this project. You know, utility companies carry large undepreciated asset burdens, and they look at that when they look at their economics to consider whether to do carbon capture or not. And so as we looked at it, we didn't have that undepreciated asset burden that is hindering the economics. But we also, with our great partners, we have the guarantee coming from Mitsubishi Heavy Industries America, who is the technology partner for the carbon capture technology. They will be providing us a guarantee of a 90% plus CO2 capture. And that also is a risk diversification. We believe that it could potentially be higher than 90%. That technology has been proven at the Petronova installation as high as 95% capture rate. So we're very excited to see how we can move that capture rate and that guarantee up further as we get closer to the construction of the facilities. And then our consortium partnership for the EPC with Kiwit Power Constructors, Mitsubishi, and Sergeant Lundie, the ability to be able to get those three companies in a consortium, the experience that they bring, because they are the three companies that were involved in the Petronova installation, and to be able to have Kiwit step up into a role where they will provide us a full project wrap, which is a fixed-price project contract for the construction. All of those things lend themselves to the strength that makes San Juan Generating Station the best place to do the largest carbon capture project in the world. So we talked about the Energy Transition Act, and as Hank mentioned, you know, the San Juan Generating Station will need to comply with that. The limit that we have to comply with in the ETA is set at 1,100 pounds per megawatt hour of CO2 intensity. And currently, the plant is at approximately 2,200 pounds. And so although the ETA implementation regulations have yet to be promulgated, with our advancement of the retrofit with the combustion, post-combustion carbon capture technology from Mitsubishi and their capture rate, we will be able to comply significantly below that level because the capture rate will reduce our CO2 emissions intensity to approximately 250 pounds per megawatt hour once fully retrofit. And that will classify this plant as a low emissions electricity facility, which means that its CO2 emissions are lower than your typical combined-cycle gas turbine plants and your gas peaking plants. And I think it's also important to know that with, that this project is not requiring any state, county, or local subsidies of any kind. It is being funded by the marketplace. Hank, I'll let you emphasize a little bit more on the environmental investments that have been made.
Thank you, Cindy. And to give you some background, we'll talk about the investments at San Juan. I have the opportunity to work at San Juan Generating Station for many years in various leadership roles. So I get excited when I talk about these technologies, but I won't bore you with them, so bear with me. Engineer at heart, so bear with me. So San Juan 1 and 4 again are in continued operation, burning stuff by two minutes cold. You know, currently, the entire plant is well within the environmental regulations and well advanced in many technologies, if you will. In an agreement is why San Juan 2 and 3 were retired and no longer in operation at the end of 2017. And with the retirement of 2 and 3, a lot of tens and hundreds of millions of dollars, frankly, in pollution controls were put on San Juan 1 and 4. You really need a really clean gas stream for carbon capture, so that always, that sets a stage early that that capital investment doesn't have to be made. Again, talking to 5.8 million metric tons that will be removed with carbon capture in that timeframe. So what existing technologies are on 1 and 4, I'll go through those that really benefit it. For NOx control, or haze, if you will, that is low NOx burners under fire air and over fire air. That control the temperature of the flame, which affects what NOx is produced. To optimize the burning to get the maximum BTU throughput without creating NOx. Then we have SNCR, which is a chemical reaction, which removes NOx through a process. It does not have catalyst. So for example, Four Corners APS has a catalyst design installation. This is non-catalyst design on San Juan 1 and 4. Then it has brilinated activated carbon, which is actually injected in the process for mercury removal, and probably some of the best in the nation. It was used for MAT standards or design standards across the nation and used as a benchmark. San Juan Station was based on its efficiency. Articulate's captured in baghouses, very efficient process, a great design. And then we have a wet flue gas desalverization system, which is basically an SO2 removal system, very critical for a carbon capture process. And to show how that helps the economy, nearly $2 million or a million and a half, almost $2 million of calcium carbonate, or basically an acid or tums, if you will, is mined in the grant area and trucked to San Juan Plant to be used. And so it helps the economy, it helps the state. I use that as an example. Also, what's really nice about the plant is its ZLD, or zero liquid discharge. Any water brought to the plant is processed and reused time and time again to limit water consumption from the San Juan River. And we all know about the shortage sharing agreements and things with the San Juan, so it's great that we manage our water processes at the station. All of that sets the stage to say, all the major capital that we would need to be built for a carbon capture plant, and say an old plant, have already been built and done at San Juan. To add a little bit on top of that is San Juan Station has also had a lot of life cycle capital work done, turbines and generators and things like that, that increase the reliability of the station. Also, it helps with its ramp rates and discussions about how a coal-fired car plant can ramp up and down. And in these times, dispatchable and AGC control are critical. So a lot of good things have been done at San Juan Plant to set the stage for carbon capture. So with the next slide, I think I have that one, and we have wins for various wins we see for the project, plus years, nearly 40 years. And so we've invested many amounts of our percentage of that capital into the plant. I can tell you that the FUS, we're very conservative, we're cash-based, and so we've paid cash for capital into that plan over the years, and still have $30 million of investment that is not fully depreciated in San Juan Station. We've paid for it, we want to use it, and so that's an opportunity we have, which is a win for us to get that return for that investment we've already put in as FUS. So I'll skip around on the bullets, and I'll talk about, you know, Farmington's low electric rates. Again, because it's dispatchable and it's low cost, it has the ability for us to keep our rates low, and frankly, we have some of the lowest, if not the lowest, rates in the region. Double-digit percentages above other utilities in the region, I would say. And so that opportunity continues on with the carbon capture. People say, boy, that's expensive. But you need to say that actually, the carbon capture is one of the customers of the plant, and if anything helps drive with scale down the cost of that bus bar to market, which makes that low-cost dispatchable energy out there for anybody to take advantage of.
Thank you, Hank. The project's also a tremendous win for both the workers and the community. By keeping the San Juan Generating Plant and the San Juan Mine operating, we will preserve approximately 1,500 direct and indirect jobs and more than $53 million in state and annual local tax revenues. Those numbers came from a New Mexico independent assessment, they are not our numbers. And there is a belief that those numbers are actually larger. So the carbon capture installation will extend the plant to the life that would have otherwise closed that plant because of the ETA. The carbon capture will also create new jobs and economic development. And this was validated in a DOE, another report that was done that we were not involved in, that the DOE Department of Energy commissioned, and they released on October 5th. So they also have looked at the economic impacts and benefits of the carbon capture through the lens that they went through. So very strong reinforcement. The carbon capture will create new construction jobs during the carbon capture facility's construction, and that will exceed 2 million worker hours for the construction. And New Mexico will become the pioneer as they advance the largest carbon capture project in the world. And we're also partnering with San Juan on the, you know, job training. And so you will also be training the workforce with the carbon capture technology and facilities that can then help to deploy and do further decarbonization elsewhere in New Mexico and also elsewhere in the country. I want to emphasize the importance of the preservation of the jobs. These are high-paying jobs, and 40% of the workforce at both the plant and the mine are Navajo members. And these are very high-paying jobs. And with the recent closure of the Navajo Generating Station and announced other closers, whether it's Four Corners, Escalante, preserving these jobs really is a way to help preserve a middle-class income level in the Navajo. And so it's very important, and if we can expand that through economic development, then we can bring even additional jobs. Do you want to talk about schools?
No, we don't. And so for this commission, members of the county commission, I think nobody knows the property tax related to San Juan better than you all do, but central consolidated, it's a no-brainer, right? It's 3.6 million annually that they've seen in property tax. Ratio, that's like one medium school and 39 teachers. You know, it's also a consistent revenue that we'd like to continue to provide for the schools that allows them for bond refinancing, things like that, payment, their bond ratings, et cetera. And I think Cindy hit it on the head again, we want to keep families in the area. Right now, you know, I get texts of families that have moved out of the area with what's going on with the project. I want them to come back right here again. So that's what I would be excited to see right now. So want to keep those families and keep that work and those dollars in our district or school districts and our college and schools. And so San Juan College, 2 million a year. You know, PNM and as often as the owner-operator, they've done scholarships that have been there at San Juan College, 115,000, for example. We see things like that continuing with our partnership. And then also very specific customer-based training for the power plant operators and workers after, the mechanics, the ice crews, et cetera. We would see that continuing on with the continued operation of San Juan Plant. Again, for Farmington Schools, continue to, you know, the opportunity for the families to stay and the funding that that allocates from the state and federal funding, those are key and critical, you know. Severance tax, that could potentially expand tax revenues. And then Hank, Cindy talked thoroughly about our partnership with the School of Energy at San Juan College and the opportunities that'll have for students in the future for the fourth course.
Hey, Hank.
Yes, sir.
I would comment on Mike Stark, Doug Eckles, Chuck Portner, John Vekstedt, all these people that have been involved in this on the San Juan County's part. I think they've had the foresight to step involved and see, I don't know whether we put up much money or not, probably not, but a little bit. But as I'd say, thank you to them for all their involvement and all their foresight to see what's going on.
Commissioners Sullivan, I can't agree more with that and the letters of support they have done for, you all have done as a group, for the grant funding, et cetera. Those have went a long ways to keep the dollars there to get the studies going, to evaluate this project and make it happen. So appreciate your comments and appreciate the commission and the county manager for sure. Thank you.
Yes. Absolutely. Now, the project, we've emphasized environment pretty extensively so far, but, you know, it is an environmental emissions project, and brings the benefit of reducing the CO2 emissions out of the reliable electricity baseload generating station while preserving those jobs. And so a very strong win for the environment as well. And, you know, Enchant, when we, when the co-founders came into San Juan County, it was extremely important to them that they support unionized labor and that, because as you can imagine, building a carbon capture facility requires an extensive amount of skilled labor. And so our EPC consortium team got together very early on with the labor leaders in New Mexico, and they negotiated a project labor agreement for the construction of the carbon capture plant. We have fully committed to full union job for that construction, as well as the significant deferred plant maintenance that we'll be doing at the plant. And we are urging the use of unionized labor, whether it's in the sequestration wells or whether it's in the CO2 pipeline construction, because we believe in the importance of keeping those skilled trades as local as possible. So you can see the different trades that will be involved in just the construction of the carbon capture project or facility itself. Again, emphasizing just that facility is 2 million worker hours, but there will be even additional worker hours for the deferred maintenance in the pipeline construction. But that 2 million worker hours... But that 2 million worker hours is equivalent to 960 annual full-time jobs. And so very important job generator during the construction while also preserving significant jobs that are full-time jobs in the communities. I want to quickly give you an update on what we've been doing and where we're going. So 2020 has really been the year of focusing on the front end of things. So we've been raising development capital, both equity and debts. Our co-founders have continued to fund the project with their own personal money, and we are in discussions with equity investors for the remaining development investment that we need that gets us to the financing stage of this project. We also initiated electricity offtake negotiations for power, and we initiated CO2 offtake negotiations as well as storage negotiations. We initiated coal supply negotiations with Westmoreland, and we initiated the carbon capture plant permitting process as well. And we did that this year in addition to securing the two DOE grants tremendously with your support on the sequestration and working in partnership with New Mexico Tech. So next year is really about bringing things, or next year, this year, sorry, it's the fifth already. It's like time's getting away. This year is really about bringing things over the finish line, right? So we need to complete the power offtake agreements, our CO2 offtake and our sequestration storage operator agreements, the coal supply agreement. We need to complete the ownership transfer definitive agreements with the existing owners of the plant. We need to complete our FEED study. We need to then finalize our EPC contract with our construction consortium, and then complete our carbon capture island permitting that will position us to begin construction. In parallel with all of that, the New Mexico team that's been put together will continue the sequestration well work there, the characterization, as well as the class six permitting that will be necessary for the production wells for the permanent storage of the CO2. And then we are targeting to do our project financing at the tail end of the year, and we will be initiating an RFP for a plant operator of the facility. And then we would like to commence construction of the carbon capture facility this year once the permitting is completed. We have provided the current owners a early site access agreement to try and be able to have access to that facility. It's adjacent, construction would not impede the current operations of the plant, and that would allow us to get started sooner rather than later. So we are hoping to advance that opportunity with the existing owners. From 2022 through 2024, we'll finalize the operator for the plant, we'll transfer the ownership to Enchant, we'll receive that transfer of ownership. We will then do the deferred maintenance that we are planning to do on the two units. Part of our financing does include an approximately $140 million in investment in deferred maintenance on the units in order to ensure that they are operating at a high capacity factor level. And then we will begin the energization of the carbon capture trains, and we are targeting to have all four of the carbon capture trains brought online by the end of '24. That is another aspect of risk diversification. We are not trying to enter the valley of death of new technology from a scale-up. The technology is proven, and it's proven at scale at Petronova. And so what we will be doing is we will be building four of those carbon capture trains rather than trying to scale up to one big large facility. So that will allow us to bring each train on separately and while completing construction on the subsequent trains, that also helps us integrate the operation and mitigate risks of scaling of technology. So I know we've spent a lot of your time, and we've gone through a lot, and we need to open it up for questions. We do have a tremendous list of partners and service providers that we couldn't be here today without, and so I just want to thank you all for your support. I know you have been tremendously supportive of advancing this effort and continue to do so at every turn, and we can't appreciate that enough. So thank you. With that, Mr. Chair, I will turn it back to you.
All right, I think there might be a few questions. I had one that came to mind while you were speaking. As far as transmission goes, do you see any challenges with the solar plants that are being proposed?
And from a transmission standpoint, Hank might be better positioned to fill this, but obviously, the, you know, two units have already come down. So if you think about the size of the transmission there, you know, you've already taken two units down, so you've just cut the amount of electricity offtake from San Juan in half already. So Hank, I don't know if you want to say something else there, because it's a pretty sizable amount of transmission there.
No, I'd agree. I think it's the overall volume of what you see with the four and the two units and what's in the agreements right now that we have with our ownership agreements for discussion. I think there's opportunities. I think when you talk broader transmission and what's called open access transmission, that could vary on various routes, and so it depends on the parties. Also, you have the opportunity with your power offtakers, they may also already have transmission rights that are on various transmission lines because they've bought power in the past, and so I think those opportunities are out there, but I think everybody sees the benefit, I'll say that, of transmission in the Northwest New Mexico.
If I might add, Mr. Chair and commissioners, not amplifying what Cindy and Hank said, we obviously believe that the transmission assets with the existing facility will come to us, but it was prudent and it's public record that we've entered the transmission queue for a total of 1,800 megawatts for what, as you've seen in the PowerPoint, is 558 megawatts of transmission outside the fence. So more than three times what we will eventually need. We're obviously trying to make calculated bets as to where our offtakers will be, but it's prudent to have, as Cindy said, there's a lot of headroom given the retirement, Hank talked about that. We also have our own transmission service requests.
As far as the FEED study goes, I think that was projected to be ready or completed in 2021, is that right?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So we began the FEED study, we've completed the design basis. We then needed to move into what's called stack testing. Unfortunately, it took us a few months to get the stack testing done, longer, quite a bit longer than we had hoped. We mobilized and demoed our contract company for the stack testing. What was it, Hank, four times?
Four times, yes, Cindy.
Yeah, four times to be able to accomplish the stack testing because there were issues with the units that prohibited us from advancing the test. So all that said, we took a few hits on schedule with the FEED study as we were trying to get our stack testing, but we are planning to complete the FEED study in the first half of this year.
Is that affecting your ability to complete your purchase agreements?
No, that is not directly affecting the purchase agreements.
Okay. Does anybody else have a question?
I have a question.
Commissioner Fortner?
All right. With all the conversation with the legislative session coming up, are there any modifications that are going to be needed to the ETA to allow Enchant Energy opportunity to better to get to the project line, the finish line?
Yeah, Commissioner Fortner, thank you very much for that question. Obviously, in its most general way, I would say we need time. And, you know, time is probably the most critical path item that we need. There's some clarification in different components of the ETA, you know, that would be nice to have in the section that, you know, that is specific to the San Juan Generating Station. And so we do believe that it would be prudent to provide some additional time for the online date of starting compliance for the CO2 intensity level, and then to clarify the compliance approach to measuring it, which is typically a three-year rolling average compliance. And so those are the things that we're talking about. We haven't officially come forward with anything at this stage.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Tochi?
The closure of the plant is, you know, scheduled for June 30th, 2022, and that's coming up pretty soon. And what do you see as kind of, will you meet that deadline to get it further, or what do you think will happen?
Hank, do you want to fill that, or do you want me to?
Go ahead, and I'll finish off, Cindy.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate the question. That is a contractual date. And so, you know, as I looked at it when I first joined the Enchant team, there is, you know, the negotiation amongst the existing owners occurred before they elected whether they were going to stay in or not. So I think the sideboards are reasonably clear on that negotiation, and it really is getting all the parties to commit to get it over the finish line, and that's what Hank and I are working very hard to make sure happens.
Cindy, to piggyback on that, if the units come offline, are there going to be issues in bringing them back online, or is it, or obviously, we're probably hoping for a smooth transition to where they don't even come offline, but if they do, are there going to be any issues?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can take units down and bring them back online. I mean, you do that through ordinary course of business. We don't want to have to do that is the best answer I can give you, and the reason is less about the units and it's less about the equipment, it's really about the workforce. You know, we don't want to have a break in, you know, the workforce jobs. And so there is, you know, I've sold power plants and I've bought power plants in my career, and there has never been a missed step on workers, you know, completing their shift tonight and starting their shift tomorrow morning, because it really is all behind the scenes, and it's paperwork and it's contracts and it's, you know, transition plans and everything. So there shouldn't be if we get our work done with the existing owners. But there's no physical constraint with the plant, the units themselves. Hank, anything?
No, and I would jump in there, and again, remember, June 30th, 2022, go forward, we can still continue operations as they currently set today, July 1, 2022, and continue to operate that plant. Then it's just a marketing of that asset or that power that's out there. Again, you would not have the load off of the 847 at that timeframe until we build the carbon capture islands, but the plant can continue with its process from there, and Enchant can market that 95% ownership they have. Of course, city of Farmington, we want our power, our 43 megawatts, June 30th, and we want it July 1. Frankly, why we're doing this project, we want the employees to leave on that day with their hard hats on June 30th and come in with new stickers on their hard hats the very next day. That's what would be the optimal or seamless approach. You can lay up units, if you will, and actually, in building the carbon capture island, the plant doesn't have to be online, so continued operation. You build everything around it and then take it down for a short, what they call tie-in outage, and then connect the equipment, if you will, and so you can work them concurrently and minimize your downtime, which is what you want to do from a business standpoint.
Any other questions? Cindy, Hank, thank you. Hank, I know normally, January 1 to 15, at least in years past, you've been out in a different type of unit, unit two, and hopefully, you're not missing on any of that by presenting to us, but thank you.
Commissioner Chair, I've been taking a lot of pictures because that's the tag I have, so I have a photo tag this year, and I've been taking advantage of that. I do have a very large meal dear buck right out my window here at the office, so I can...
Very well. Thank you guys for being here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
All right, that gets us to item number three, which is consideration of resolution number 20-21-35, extending Families First Coronavirus Response Act emergency paid leave to our county employees. Mr. Stark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I hope that was a long enough title for you to read. Thank you for persevering. So before you tonight is the extension of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, as you might recall, and in front of you is a summary sheet that we have at each of your desks regarding what was put in place by the federal government through the First Stimulus Act, and it required employers to provide leave to employees, all related to, paid sick leave related to exposures to COVID-19 and/or childcare-related needs and/or a whole host of other things, actually, six different qualifying reasons for leave that you'll see on the document. That was put in place April 1st, it expired December 31st of 2020. However, lasts the end of the year, President Trump signed the new stimulus bill, which did extend the tax credit that's associated with this provision to all employers. Now, I will have you note that that tax credit was not made available to states and local governments during the first round, so that's been a cost that we've had to absorb. Now, fortunately, we have been the recipient of some CARES Act funding to help assist with that, and also another grant, a federal grant that could also cover some of the costs that we've incurred. But it does not mandate, like it did previously, that employers extend this leave to employees. However, we would suggest the staff strongly recommending that we do continue, just follow the same guideline relative to the tax credit that San Juan County extend this benefit to employees to March 31st of 2021. It's specifically important for those new employees that come onboard that do so without any leave or leave that we do provide sick vacation as accrued. And so when you have a new detention officer, a new sheriff's deputy come onboard, they have really no accrued leave. And so having this type of leave made available to them, especially those departments that are working in congregate care settings or have a high risk of being exposed to COVID, we think is very beneficial, A, as a benefit to our workforce, and B, we certainly don't want employees having to feel like they have to come into work sick and to hide symptoms of COVID, et cetera. So a lot of valuable benefits for why we would bring this forth to you tonight and ask for you to extend the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, a paid sick leave through March 31st of 2020 via resolution 20-21-35. I can stand for any questions.
This seems to be essentially crucial to, especially the detention center and the sheriff's department. How have we been faring as of recent out at the detention center?
Mr. Chairman, we did have quite a few employees out, approximately 20, about a week and a half ago, that were, had exposures to COVID. Majority of those exposures, I should note, have been from outside of the workplace. And so, but of course, they have been either experiencing symptoms or and/or have tested positive. Of course, then we're able to utilize this leave to have those folks quarantine at home... home and, and not have to be fearful of, of losing a job or not having leave to cover it. But we have a good news. We are experiencing a number of recoveries. And we also received quite a bit of assistance from our Attorney of Sentencing Department, detention officers, juvenile services detention officers. We even had employees from McGee Park sign up to work some overtime in the kitchen and get them trained in the, in the need that they had to cover for detainees who were positive. Because, you know, we was our detainee, it was a detainee kitchen crew that manages that piece. So anyway, I, I think that we've here of recent have really made some, some good strides to improving the staffing situation. I can't say enough about all of the various departments and employees who've come forth to want to work shifts and help us out in a time of need. So very much appreciated. Thank you for asking.
I believe it's an action item, I'll stand for a motion.
That we accept the Family First Coronavirus Response Act? I'll second that.
Then moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion, questions? Not having any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Leave it passed unanimously unless I hear otherwise. Takes us to item number four, consideration of adoption of the San Juan County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. I believe Ms. Truby Tilden is going to be presenting that. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I didn't want Mike's title to outdo mine.
I mean, you guys are competing very well.
The mitigation plan is to our ability to get disaster funds, federal disaster funds. So if you're looking at the plans that are available, you have an emergency operations these are the disasters that we have posted. These are the things that we see in San Juan County. And here's an idea of plans for each jurisdiction to address those particular disasters, how we would like to, if we have funding to address them. So wildfire, flooding, and drought are our top three issues that we see over and over again. This plan allows us to apply for mitigation funds from the state and federal level if there is a disaster declaration that is responsive and is required for us to be able to have access to that type of funding. It is a nationally required plan, as well as the state has their own plan, and then we piggyback off that, create a local plan. Can I stand for any questions?
Are there any questions?
Just to let you know, the adoption that you are doing today is basically your approval of the plan. It will then go to FEMA for final approval. We have a preliminary based on your adopting it. Each of the jurisdictions will go through the same process. We'll combine that all together and send the combined plan with the adoption documents to FEMA for the final plan. It'll come back to us. We will have to review again in five years.
Mr. Chair, right now, the, the main one we, we're worried about is drought. So if something more different national disaster comes, then we would change that?
Absolutely. This is a living document, Commissioners. It, it basically, we look at what we have here locally. The state goes through every disaster possible, from earthquake, volcano, I mean, things we haven't ever seen before. So say like we have a volcano pop up tomorrow over, you know, somewhere in the county.
In Chupra.
Yeah. You know, at, at some of these rift zones that we have. Because we are on, we do have fault lines, we do have activity, you know, Pogosa Springs has a lot of geothermal. So say the volcano pops up and it attacks us, we can, at that time, we can address that in the future. We don't have to be, you know, sho- shooed into this one little corner. We can move this around. It is a living document. Something happens between now and the five-year review, we simply add that in, let FEMA know, let the state know, and it just moves right into the next planning phase. And we have done that in the past with generators.
This is a, an action item, so I'd stand for a motion.
Okay. I move that we adopt the San Juan County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation.
I'll second that.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion, any questions? Not hearing any. Move forward with a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It appears as though it is unanimous unless I hear otherwise. Brings us to, thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number five, consideration of the Open Meetings Resolution Number 20-21-33. Mr. Echols.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Just so you can get off Mike's back, I authored the real long title to it.
Thank you, Dan.
It had too many acronyms for meetings. I hate that. So before you today is our annual Open Meetings Act Resolution. We're required by state law at our first meeting to do a resolution indicating when we anticipate our regular meetings to be, how we'll give notice of those meetings, what sort of notice we'll give for special meetings or emergency meetings. The only thing, things of importance are, if you don't want it to be four o'clock on the first and third Tuesdays, now is a good time to change that. It wasn't our intention to pin down to that. And you can change that at any time during the course of the year if you need to. Couple of other COVID-related changes. We've clarified that a Commissioner might attend virtually as well as telephonically, something we never thought we'd be doing even a year ago. And we've also indicated that we will comply with the directives from the Attorney General in how we'll allow for public participation. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Echols?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to pass the Open Meetings Resolution 20-21-33.
Seconded.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion, any questions? Not hearing any. We'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Sullivan, I'll ask you to clarify your vote. Caught you right in the middle.
Yes.
Sounds like it's a unanimous. Brings us to, we're going to skip right over the report from the county. No, I'm joking. Brings us to the report from the county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I, I guess you were trying to avoid the 30-minute report I had to give you. The good news is, it's like two minutes.
Very good.
So, yeah, I'll have Mr. Mestas come up, our emergency manager, and I do want to just defer some time to him to give you an update on our COVID-19 response efforts to the community, specifically to talk about vaccine distribution to the community and how that process is going and just what you all could expect as we move forward. Before I do that, just quickly, I wanted to, I did announce at the last commission meeting that Larry Hathaway retired as our General Services Administrator. I know it's a little awkward because she's already presented in front of you. So this is just introducing Michelle Truby-Tilden as our new Community Development Director, who took that portion of Larry's role. And we went through a recruitment process and she ended up as, as the, as the top pick. And so we're really happy to have Michelle on board. She brings 16 years of experience as the flood plan manager, all the emergency management experience. So you just saw a portion of that. That was actually her providing you a report on, on her work as a flood plan manager. Now we get to add that piece along with the community development duties. And so we're really happy to have Michelle in that role. And then Diana Chapman, who was our Chief Procurement Officer, just absorbed additional supervisory duties upon Larry's departure. And so she'll continue maintaining and providing the great procurement services that she has today and keep us out of hot water and in compliance with the auditors. Another important component to a successful audit, so. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and turn over the remainder of my 30 minutes, I mean, two minutes to Mr. Mestas to give you a quick update.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Congratulations. It's my pleasure to be here presenting before you today.
You know, I just noticed that it's Mike passing the mic. Mike and Mike. Sorry, we digress.
My report for January 5th, 2021, as of today, prior to our, our afternoon numbers, which I haven't received yet, we've had 10,620 positives in San Juan County, 301 deaths with 4,689 reported as being recovered in San Juan County. A milestone for me today is I'm going to finish report after the commission meeting, a SIP rep number 200, 200, 200 SIP rep to the State Emergency Operations Center. So being in this 11 months, many a long night for County Manager and I. Weekends, we'll finish up that report. Possibly the County Manager will share that with you this evening. I've been asked by staff to present our goals for vaccine distribution in San Juan County. Quite frankly, we've started months ago with our planning. We've rolled it out with the fruition of getting vaccine in San Juan County a few weeks ago. And so our mission from the Department of the Health is, is now and currently to provide Phase 1A. I provided that to a cover sheet to you so that you wouldn't have to go through CDC to find out. This is who the state of New Mexico Department of Health is recommending that we give vaccinations to, to 1A. So it's our healthcare workers, our person providing direct medical care, our residents in nursing homes, and so on and so forth, as you see before you. That's not to say that a few folks haven't squeaked by. Been told by Mary at Walmart, and let me, let me go back a few. So the, so the locations that we're doing vaccination are, we partnered up with Walmart pharmacies, east and west. So they're helping us with vaccine. Department of Health out of McGee Park is doing vaccinations for us as well. San Juan Regional Medical Center is doing it, and so is PMS, Pediatric and Medical Service. So we, we're doing the divide and conquer method here in San Juan County so that we can get this vaccine and get it out quickly so that none of it's going to go to waste. So going back to my previous comment about Walmart, some of the people that have squeaked by, that have, might have been bragging on Facebook that they've gotten a shot, have been given that code at Walmart by a family member. So that's not to say that it's taking it away from anybody because we have plenty of vaccine. Something else that you might have heard from the schools, I got a call from superintendent's office yesterday, I was putting out those fires, how come Taos have received shots at their school districts in Indiana. So quite frankly, I told them that San Juan County is still providing shots to 1A. I called my counterparts at Hobbs and Taos. They didn't want to waste vaccine. They have exhausted their 1A list. Quite frankly, they weren't, people weren't wanting to come and get shots. So they didn't want to waste it. So I'll be able to help our teachers there, wastewater, and law enforcement. We are serving some of the law enforcement under 1A if they do medical transports to San Juan. So we are helping with that facet as well. So for the rest of COVID in San Juan County, we continue to meet with our stakeholders. Commissioner Warner was able to be on that call a couple of weeks ago, and I thank you for, for being part of that. As you know, we have a great system here in San Juan County and it's great.
Determining where you're at on the list, is there, I, I'd heard you sign up on a, on the state's website, and then they call you or notify you if you're, if you're up? Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So initially, we started with a spreadsheet in my office and making phone calls to stakeholders and to doctors' offices because we didn't have information. So last week, they came out with this community vaccination portal through the state of New Mexico, which it's been a headache. People have been, been able to enter their information, but local DOH and my office don't have access to it. So yesterday, we got on with the Deputy Chief of Staff at the Governor's Office, and he's going to get us access to it because we've been told there's 1,000 people on there that might be in 1A that we can still administer to. So we're trying to get access to that. But meanwhile, we're continuing to make phone calls. Just today, I got on with San Juan Center for Independence. They said they hadn't given their shots. They had 175 people that were eligible under the 1A. So I got them going to Walmart and PMS. So we're taking care of them as well. San Juan Regional continues to help with the first responders. And Saturday and Wednesday and next week, we're doing second shot doses at McGee Park. So we're continuing to move forward and help with those.
Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done, Mr. Mestas. Just being on that phone call was really an eye-opener to see all the networking that's gone on and all the work around our county and involvement. Thanks very much. And I want to say I got my shot on Saturday, and it was really nice that they continue to follow up with you. I just had some pain at the injection site. So that was it, but it's doing fine today. I don't know what the future and how quickly this vaccine has come about, that is a little concerning to some people, but this is a whole different situation with the opportunity to really speed things up. So.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Warner, you're welcome. And thank you for your comment. cdnmhealth.org, the DOH website, I, the vaccine, they have, and we'll send those links to the Commission. They have some information on there. That was something else that our PIOIC committee is going to work on messaging as well, because you're correct. That myth out there is keeping people from, quite frankly, wanting to get a shot. 38% of firefighters in Farmington, they're the only ones that wanted it. The rest of his team is giving the wait-and-see attitude.
Yeah.
Same thing with the volunteer firefighters. Out of 200, she's given 58 shots. So we continue to work on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Tocchini?
I think, you know, there are some people who are really good consumers of information, and they say there's three different types of vaccines, and they say one is more effective. This one is, what's the story on that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Tocchini, those myths are out there, and quite frankly, there isn't very much information out there. It's, it's the word of mouth that our PO helped me out is, the rumor mill out there ruins any facts that are out there. We know that the Pfizer and the Moderna have shown good results, the vaccine.
AstraZeneca.
AstraZeneca is coming out. And there's only been one or two allergic reactions with the Pfizer that we've, that we've been told. And so you're, you're right. It's, it's
Well, have some people who are not familiar with signing up, you know, like somebody was asking me that, what if I don't even have a computer and what do I do?
So that's something that Mr. Neely and I addressed today. We were like, well, what about the challenges of technology and the folks that don't have a computer? So I don't want to steal your thunder, so go ahead and share with what you have going on.
We work as a team. And Commissioner Tocchini, Chairman, I've been in contact with the Farmington Public Library, and they're offering their services, computers, and folks that have the knowledge there don't have a way to sign up. So we're going to do a bigger rollout on that. There are some challenges involved. At this point, the state's form, the state's form requires an email. So Mr. Mestas is working with the state to make sure that there are provisions for folks that don't have an email address. There's a way to opt out if you don't have a cell phone number, receive text messages, but not a way to opt out if you don't have an email. So there are some problems on the state level, but we're working with our local partners, including San Juan United Way, San Juan College, and Farmington Public Library, to make sure that there are opportunities. This is This is just like the census, as you'll remember. We want to make those opportunities available. We already know if there is infrastructure available. We just have to make sure that those resources are aware that they're.
And we know once we get to 1B, we're going to have those issues.
Chairman, I would just like to remind Devon.
Please state your name for the record.
It happened to be Tanya Shelby, county clerk. I do have all of those kiosks that are in the. But they have not been, they haven't done any of the tablets. So if you are, if that is something that you would rather utilize to get those out to the community.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mike, I know that you're working really hard not to lose any of the vaccine. What are some of the things you're doing to make sure that we're not losing it or they're going bad?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lanier, some of the things we're doing is we're ensuring that we have appointments. And when we're doing those clinics out at McGee Park, she's actually only ordering enough vaccine to the personnel that have actually made appointments. So far as the San Juan Regional, they have vaccine storage freezers, so we're not going to lose any vaccine there. The Department of Health actually got their vaccine freezer this last week, so we won't have any problems with that as well. So to, in short, answer your question, just making sure that the appointments meet the vaccine load. And we did have that problem out at McGee Park last week when we had the dentist, the dentist roll out. We had a few dentists not show up. So we went ahead and grabbed some of the essential workers out of the phone office that meet with the public at that time. And we didn't waste two doses, so.
Also, you have them already warming, ready to give.
Correct. They were already at room temperature. It couldn't be refroze. So we had the staff at McGee Park come over that dealt with public on an everyday basis. Say, hey, even though you're not 1A, let's give you your shot so that we won't waste these two doses.
Backup plan.
Backup plan.
And, I'm sorry, I just have one more question. Have you, have various physician offices been notified also? Sometimes they know what patients are standing by, ready to go also, or?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ford. Yes, we've got quite a great list with our Department of Health office, with our local physicians, and utilizing their physician rights at San Juan Regional. We've got all the physicians done at San Juan Regional, and their staff is coming little by little to the other ancillary locations. So we have contact with them. And so you're right, if we have somebody that's a vulnerable population, so we don't waste a dose, we'll definitely call them.
Thank you.
I can come up with some more questions. We don't want to do the 30. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that's the report from county manager. Are there any reports from elected officials or department heads?
Ken Martin, Chief Financial Officer, San Juan County. I wanted to hand out to you all the financial report that we have been to give, that we put together to submit to GFOA. Last year was our first year to do it, and we were very fortunate to be awarded the award. So we were very happy with that. This year, we're just continuing on with it, trying to make it better. It's a very shortened and condensed booklet that summarizes this booklet to guys also have. So it's condensing a 270-some-odd-page document down to just a few pages to help the citizens of our county understand where the county is, how we're operating, and how we handle our finances, and how we help the citizens with their needs. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I saw someone else flinch, she was ready.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner and Commissioners. Congratulations, so glad you're here.
Thank you.
I'm glad I'm here. I just wanted to briefly catch you up on the progress for the Mental Wellness Resource Center. I have written the pass out, my little page to you. So in just, we're receiving phone calls, walk-ins, appointments, emails, lots of questions for people, and are we short one?
Nope.
Okay.
I've got one.
So all in all, there's been about 54 contacts. I think there's probably more because I, a little later, when we opened about seven weeks ago, I want to say, I said to the staff, oh, by the way, let's start tracking this. And so we are. I'm so very proud of the staff. They are becoming experts in all things San Juan County, all the resources in San Juan County. There are a lot of resources. The trick is to hook people up to them. And so they're becoming experts in that. Anything from helping somebody decide what kind of mental health issue they want to go after, where they want to go, what they've tried before, how can they afford it? How can they get there? To understanding the complexities of a support animal. And they're becoming experts, and I'm so proud of our staff. They're doing a really wonderful job. They categorize the top needs. Number one is counseling, then psychiatry assistance, suicide prevention, suicide assessment, suicides happening, housing issues, and financial assistance, mostly resting around rental assistance. And so we've kind of given you an overall of our flyer distribution. We just send those out everywhere. Anytime we're on a Zoom meeting or meeting face-to-face, even down to stocking Detective Behavioral Health Deputy Smith, keeping him stocked up with flyers because he hands them out on the streets wherever he goes. So we're doing it. It's happening in spite of COVID, the holidays, a slow opening. It's happening. Thank you to Devon, who's really spread the word a lot for us. Commissioners, you've been on TV, you've been talking about us, so I appreciate that. We've even contacted Navajo Nation, the Behavioral Health Services of Navajo Nation. Shirley Montoya out there knows about us. So we're getting it done. There's a lot more to do. I expect things to really increase quite a bit, so I'm really glad that the staff has had the slow time to become experts because I think it's just going to get worse before it gets better, unfortunately. That's all the indicators I'm seeing for the next year. So I'm here for any questions that you have or suggestions.
I would request that you reach out to Leadership San Juan to become part of that, or at least to present to them, or so that they know that this option is out.
Good idea.
Because there's a, you know, I learned so much about how the county functions, the different assets that the county has, and I think that, you know, this is one that needs to be highlighted for that program.
Good idea, okay. Anything else?
Any questions?
Thanks. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Sometimes we deal in the arcane, and there's a provision in the New Mexico constitution going all the way back to statehood that requires all of our elected officials to be bonded in varying amounts. We just today received the bonds for all of you and the other elected officials. And as required by law, they're delivered to the clerk's office. So if, there is a group of folks who like to complain about people not being bonded. So if they ask, are you bonded? You can truthfully answer yes. And if you want to see it, come see the clerk. She knows the people of whom I speak. But happy to let you know, we got that done.
Chairman and members of the commission, as you are aware, today I conducted the New Mexico County's Board of Directors election. We had one individual that expressed interest, and we're not going to discuss voter turnout at this time. But I would like to congratulate Commissioner Terry Fortner. She will be serving on the Board of Directors. Thank you, Tanya. You're welcome.
Did she at least vote for herself?
No comment. I don't get over your.
There's only two of you voting.
Yeah, I could thank Commissioner Lanier for voting.
We'll swiftly move on. Over to you. Any other elected officials, department heads? I want to thank staff that is stepping up and taking on additional duties. I know that we're trying to do more with less, and that's a big part of it. And just adds to your duties. But we appreciate that as a commission because there's a lot of tough decisions that are probably going to have to be made in the future, and that may have helped to alleviate some of that. So we appreciate that. I also want to welcome the two new commissioners. Hopefully you understand what you got into. All right. So welcome. And anybody else? Last chance?
Last call.
And so with that, I don't know, I'm going to ask for a vote. I'm going to start a new trend and declare the first meeting of the San Juan County Commission of 2021 to be adjourned.
I don't think we did comments from the public.
Oh, I'll undo that. Yeah, I jumped right over that. I guess I should look at the agenda. So are there, is there anybody lined up for comments or input from the general public? Okay, so since I prematurely did that, I'll just declare the meeting adjourned.